Good afternoon. Good to see each one of you. Hope you all enjoyed the cold weather as much as I did. Cold wasn't bad, but the thawing got pretty nasty. Get your sandbags and raincoats ready for next year. They say we're getting up to 10 inches of rain, so be ready. Rowa Colmas Micas?
Mr. Como.
Here.
Ms. May?
Here.
Mr. Beatty?
Here.
Mr. Hicks?
Here.
Mr. McCoy?
Here.
Mr. Graves?
Here.
Mr. Manley?
Here.
We will have a presentation of colors by West Washington High School, pledged by Ms. May, and our invocation by Sophia Plon. If you'd like to stand, please do so.
Attention, salute, pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Please bow your head as I pray. God, thank you for this day. Thank you for allowing each of us to be here today. Thank you for the opportunities you have given each of us, and thank you for letting us live in a place where kids are able to go to school and get a good education. Thank you for each person here that has been given the opportunity to make a difference in our schools. I ask that you cover every person here and give them wisdom as they lead and make decisions for our schools. Grant them discernment and direction, and I ask that you remind them to lean on your understanding and not their own. Be with each of them throughout this meeting and throughout the day. Thank you, Lord, for your goodness and your mercy. I pray all of this in Jesus' name. Amen.
Thank you. Again, that was Washington Parish High School today. When you have approval of minutes for December 12th, meeting and motion?
I'll make a motion.
I'll second it.
Have a motion and second. All in favor, yes?
Yes.
Yes.
Any opposition? There is none. We need to approve the agenda as it's listed, and then we'll need to amend it to include items three, four, and five. So do I have a motion to approve the agenda?
I also move that we approve the agenda.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. All in favor, yes?
Yes.
Yes.
Any opposition? There is none. Need a motion to amend the agenda at items three, four, and five, under permission to view?
I move we amend the agenda.
I second.
Have a motion and a second. All in favor, yes?
Yes.
Yes.
And there's no opposition. Now, I guess we'll amend or approve the whole agenda as amended. Have a motion to approve the entire agenda now.
I also move that we approve the entire agenda.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. All in favor, yes?
Yes.
Yes.
Any opposition? There is none. Personnel report?
Yeah, Mr. Como, thank you. At Drew Elementary, Cheryl Boudreaux's been a longtime principal there. Cheryl is retiring, effective the first of February, and I want to go ahead and just make an announcement today that we are moving the assistant principal, Ms. Janaye Freeman, in as the interim principal effective February 5th. Janaye, if you'll stand up, she's in the back. And to replace her as assistant principal in the interim, we are appointing Rachel Hendricks, who is sitting right beside her as well. So they will finish the year, and then we'll go through the process of opening those up and filling those full-time. So appreciate both of them. Certainly appreciate Ms. Boudreaux and her service at Drew. She does an outstanding job with her team there, and we appreciate what they do. So that's it, Mr. Como.
Thanks, sir. Moving to business. Mr. Manley, do we have any response cards?
Mr. Como, we have no comment card today.
Thank you, sir. First item on the agenda is election of offers for the year 2024. Floor is open for motions.
I so move that, if you're willing, to ask Tommy Como to continue as president of the Washington Parish School Board, and Mr. Greg Manley as vice president.
I'll second.
Have a motion and a second. In discussion, all in favor, yes?
Yes.
Yes.
Any opposition? There is none. Thank you, I guess. All right, item number two, official recognition of completion of board training hours for the 2023 school year. Alain Smeed?
Thank you, Mr. Como. Congratulations. So our school board is required to take a lot of training. I'll just tell you, first of all, you have a press release in your folder that is going to go out to the press today to recognize all of you for completing your training for 2023. The LSBA, Louisiana School Board Association, is a voluntary program, and they recognize members for continuing learning units in a calendar year. Each member who earns 20 or more LSBA-approved training hours during a calendar year, keep in mind, they only have to get six, but they earn 20 or more, they are actually recognized as a certified board member, so I'm going to tell you who those are as well. So I'll start off by saying that each of our board members have achieved six or more hours in the year 2023 and gotten all of their training for that year, and you each have a certificate from LSBA at your station showing that achievement. So we'll give you a round of applause for that. Additionally, we have four board members who have achieved, and Mr. Beatty, I have your certificate, so I didn't forget you. I was just using them as an example. He's over there going, wait a minute, you forgot me. We have four board members who have achieved the certified board member status for this first year, and they are receiving a certificate from LSBA that is in the little folder, so you'll see those as well. Those board members are Sherry May, Harold McCoy, Debo Graves, and Michael Beatty. So congratulations on you guys for achieving your certification.
Thank you, my dear. Appreciate you.
And with that, I'd like to just read the resolution that was signed and certified by our superintendent this morning. School Board Member Training Resolution, whereas each member of a city or parish school board shall receive a minimum of six hours of training and instruction as required by Act 705 of the 2011 Louisiana Legislature, and whereas this training and instruction shall consist of school laws of the state, laws governing the powers, duties, and responsibilities of each city and parish school board, educational trends, research, and policy, and whereas such instruction may be received from an institution of higher education in the state, from instruction sponsored by the State Department of Education, or by an in-service training program conducted by City or Parish School Board Central Office, or the Louisiana School Board's Association, or training provided at the national level, and whereas each member of a city and parish board shall receive one hour of ethics training per year of their tenure as board member, now therefore be it resolved that it become public record that Tommy Como, Sherry May, Mike Beatty, Jerry Hicks, Harold McCoy, Debo Graves, and Greg Manley, members of the Washington Parish School Board, have successfully received and exceeded the six hours of required training as mandated by the Legislature of Louisiana, and all board members have fulfilled the mandate of one hour of ethics training for the year 2023. Signed today by Superintendent Geis.
Moving to item number three, special recognition. Ms. Smeed?
Mr. Geis, if you would join me down, please. Today, we are happy to introduce you to our new Teachers of the Year. So these teachers have taught less than a year, and they are being recognized for being outstanding already. Okay, the New Teacher of the Year program through Louisiana Department of Education recognizes and celebrates some of the state's most exceptional new educators. These candidates reflect excellence and expertise in the field, guiding students of all backgrounds and abilities to achieve success. Our district winners that we're recognizing today will go on to state-level competition, which takes place later in the spring. Our new elementary teacher of the year is Samantha Valentine from Woodlawn Elementary. Ms. Valentine graduated this past May with her bachelor's degree in elementary education from Louisiana Tech. She spent her residency in the Washington Parish School System at Drew Elementary. She is part of the student appreciation team at Woodlawn and is a life group leader at First West Baptist Church. She's a native of Benton, Louisiana, and graduated from Benton High School with a 4.0 GPA. Congratulations, Samantha. Our new middle school teacher of the year is Saquana King from Roser Middle School. Ms. King graduated in 2022 from Louisiana Tech with a bachelor's degree in biology, pre-medicine, and a minor in chemistry with the intention of becoming a nurse. She came to the district last year as a long-term sub and worked hard to earn her temporary authority to teach certification to be in the classroom full-time this school year. She decided to become an educator because she fell in love with the positive impact she had in the development and growth of our young children. In addition to her teaching responsibilities, Ms. King is the cheer coaching sponsor, the Beta Club co-sponsor, the homecoming committee chairperson, and the Black History Program chairperson. Congratulations, Saquana. All right, and our new high school teacher of the year is Brittany Powell from Washington Ms. Powell teaches AP US Government and Politics and Civics, where she puts her students into the roles of government to help them learn proactively. Two of her favorite lessons are the Law of Activity and the Presidential Communication Activity. The Law of Activity is where students act as members of the Congress and make laws they think are needed at the school. The Presidential Communication Activity is a lesson where she challenges her students to act as the president and the cabinet, and are asked to create a speech to address the nation about different topics. Ms. Powell graduated this past May from University of Louisiana Monroe with a bachelor's degree in secondary education with a focus in social studies. She graduated with a 3.9 GPA and was on the president's list for five semesters. Congratulations, Brittany. Thank you, Ms. Smeed. Moving on to item number four, presentation of Building Bridges
Grant Awards by Mr. Chris Kelly, West Monroe, West Washington Chamber President.
Superintendent and members of the board, we are so excited to be here today. On behalf of the chamber, we've added this year a grant outreach program as part of our Adopt a School Program to directly give funding to some of our area teachers. This is our first award cycle, and we're very proud to award four teachers today for their competitive submissions. Ms. Davis from Central Elementary, her project will be funded to renovate the butterfly habitat and greenhouse on campus so students can plant and grow vegetables during an outdoor learning experience that will teach them about soil, nutrients, the environment, and how to grow, propagate, and harvest vegetables. From Swayze Elementary, Ms. Antoine, this project, named Gamers, which stands for gaming automaticity through multiple engaging reading skills. That was a little challenging for me. Maybe I should be in the program. Will provide reading remediation and enrichment games to our pride reading lab, where students are given support for reading intervention for struggling students and enrichment for students who need challenges to extend their reading comprehension. Russell White from Good Hope Middle, Russell's project, Weather in West Monroe, will utilize a partnership with ULM's meteorology department in releasing a weather balloon and maintaining a weather station on campus where students can expand their knowledge and have real-time weather data on a continuous basis. And Allison Lovelady from West Monroe High School, the digital graphics project will provide supplies and materials for STEM class and Magnetek Robotics team members to learn how to video and photo edit a safety animation video using stop-motion animation with logo models in order for the team to submit for additional awards at competition. And one note, Ms. Lovelady's award will be matched by a private donor, so she will be receiving a $1,000 grant. The Adopt a School Program pairs individual companies and organizations with schools to develop and execute mutually beneficial endeavors, and we're proud today to present these four grantees. They're $500 each.
Thank you, Chris, and congratulations to each one of y'all. Moving to item number five, annual comprehensive financial report for a year ending June 30th, 2023. Ms. Margie Williamson?
Mr. Como, due to the change in the conflict in Ms. Williamson's schedule, we're going to table this until the February meeting.
Okay. Item six, financial report, November 30th. Ms. Micas?
Good afternoon, board. You have in your packets a financial report for the period ending November 30th, 2023. You look on the first page of the report, we're ending the period with the general fund fund balance of $29.5 million. This is 120% of where we were at this time last year, just to give you some context of where we are in the year, which to me shows a little bit of a timing difference, but we're right on track for where we plan to be with our budget at the end of the year. Same goes for the District One M&amp;O. We're ending the period with $27.9 million, actually round it up to $28 million. We're right at 100% of where we were at this time last year, which is right on target for our budget as we move towards the end of the year.
Ms. Micas, is that microphone on?
Is it? Is that better?
No, yeah, yeah.
Okay, sorry. And of course, if you look on the second page, under grant funds, kind of a percentage that sticks out to me is under the second column, where it shows that we're only at 87.7% of where we were. If you'll notice where we were at this time last year, if you'll notice, that's a negative fund balance. Those are our cost reimbursement grants. At this time last year, we had more outstanding costs that we were waiting on reimbursement. So those funds, there's no need to be alarmed at that 87.7%. That's just a timing difference. I know last year, we were holding reimbursements longer, waiting for everything to clear through the State Department as we went through the year. Then, of course, on the last two pages, you have a three-year comparison of the general fund and the M&amp;O funds to give you a little more context onto those numbers. Do you want to have any questions?
Any questions? No questions? Thank you, Ms. Micas.
Thank you.
Moving on to item number seven, policy consideration approval. Ms. Carrie Ferguson and Jennifer Nichols?
Good afternoon, board. The Policy Revision Committee met on Monday, January the 8th, to discuss the policies you were given today for consideration, to review and vote on at the next board meeting. The committee reviewed all of the policies and agreed to leave the policy changes the way Forthall presented on policies CG, DFG, EBBH, GBG, IHAD, and JGC. The committee also reviewed policies requested for consideration at the district level, agreeing to the changes recommended on policies EBCB and JCDAE.
In your packet today, you have just a brief description of each of those policies, but all of the policies were also emailed to you about two weeks ago now from Ms. Lamano. These policies will be up for your approval at the next board meeting.
Thank you. Any questions? Moving right along to consideration approval, updated and new job description. Jason Thompson?
Good afternoon, board. In your packet, you should have received some updated job descriptions. Most of these positions or many of these positions are within the building here. Some of them are certainly outside the building. You should have received these several weeks back from Ms. Lamano as well. These are updated, mostly tweaks that I think from practices that have been in place for several, several years now, that we would just like for you to consider and approve here today.
Just to follow up, board, for the ones of you that were here probably seven or eight years ago, we went into a pretty extensive project of completely updating our job descriptions. It hadn't been done in many years, and we have made it a point since that time to keep those current. And any change we make in duties, we try to make sure that we, those are reflected in the job descriptions for our employees. So that's, that's all this is, is just, many of you have that personnel policy evaluation plan that's about eight inches thick. This is where these come from, and we're just maintaining that and making sure that our job descriptions are current.
Any questions? Have a motion to approve the policies as they've been presented to you in the packet?
I'll make a motion.
Second.
Motion and a second. All in favor, yes?
Yes.
Yes.
Any opposition? There is none. Thank you.
Thank you, board.
Item number nine, consideration approval of information of the Academic Bridge Coalition. Todd Gass?
Thank you, Mr. Como. Board, the last legislative session, the legislature, instead of granting permanent pay raises to teachers across and non-certified teachers across the state, did a couple of things. One, they issued a one-time stipend that we are giving in two payments to our employees. You already approved an earlier payment in October. We will be sending another payment out in March as part of that payment structure. Included in that legislation was some money set aside for differentiated pay. And LDOE gave the boards across the state some direction about how to do and use that money. This is what has been, or is born out of that, is what we're calling the Washington Parish Academic Bridge Coalition. I think all of you know, and many of you know, that I have been going along with our directors around the district and visiting with our teachers, visiting with all our employees, but visiting with our teachers and just asking things, listening to their needs, their concerns. And this is where this has come from. So overwhelmingly, our teachers are asking for some assistance to create lesson planning, test banks, just a myriad of things that are outlined in this plan, that I have to say thank you to Curtis Pate, Katie Wheeler, and the instructional team for help, helping to organize, to come up with a plan to address what our teachers are telling us that they need. And a lot of this is things that are going to take a lot of work, is developing lesson plans, developing test banks, working on, making sure that we can create schedules to provide lesson planning and planning time for our elementary teachers, for example. So things that are certainly needed and certainly requested. So the money from the allocation left by the legislature can only be paid to certified staff. That's the way it's written in the law. So we're going to create this group with your approval. We actually sent the plan to LDOE, and M. Cooper, the Deputy Assistant Superintendent, on January the 9th, approved the plan, said it looked outstanding to her, and I'm certainly not taking credit. But these are the seven strategies included in here that we want to develop. So there will be seven different teams that will attack each one of these and work to come up with plans and things that our teachers have asked for in our visits around the district. So this is where this came from, and this is what we're asking for your approval today. This is, like I said, overwhelmingly requested by our teachers across the district.
Anyone have any questions, board? We have a motion to accept the Washington Parish Academic Bridge Coalition Plan?
I so move that we accept the formation of the Academic Bridge Coalition.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. All in favor, yes?
Yes.
Yes.
Any opposition? There is none.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gass. Item 10, consideration and selection of architect for restroom remodel at Drew Elementary School. Ms. May?
Yes, at Drew Elementary School, we have the main, well, a restroom that is, looks rough, and so we need to address that issue. And so I would like to ask TBA to be the leading architects on this project.
We have a motion to name TBA as the architect for the Drew Elementary restroom project.
Second.
A second. Have a motion and a second. All in favor, yes?
Yes.
Yes.
Any opposition? There is none. Consideration of selection of architect for a multipurpose room, West Ridge Middle School. Mr. Perry Hicks?
Yes, you know, a while back, we was looking at putting a building there, kind of like the one the boys have at Good Hope, I mean, at West Ridge, and we kind of got a little short on getting the information on the girls, because they got to have, or in the gym, and the gym is just way over flooded with kids. So we finally come try to get this out and get an estimate on what it would cost. And I picked in Tim Brandon and Associates for the architect, but we got to get, I was going to get with them this week and just look at what size facility they need. The boys has got one, but I think this is going to have to be a little bit bigger than what the boys have. They just got a tremendous lot of kids that use it, the girls, matter of fact. So I'm going to be there Wednesday or Thursday, and I'm going to ask that we could get one of the representatives of Tim Brandon to come with us one of them days, and I'll let them know. So we can get us an idea of what kind of architect building we need in it. So with that, I'll make the motion that we just get on again.
A second.
Have a motion and a second to name Tim Brandon as the architect for West Ridge Middle Project. All in favor, yes?
Yes.
Yes.
Any opposition? There is none. Item 12, consideration and approval of purchased property at 615 Travis Street, 403 Register Street, and 407 Register Street. These are three projects that have come available. We have a person who owns a lot of rent houses in the area, gave us the first option to buy these three houses from him. They are adjacent to property that we've been purchasing alone in hope of planning out a parking lot at West Monroe High School sometime in the future. We had him appraised. He accepted the appraisal, actually came off the total price for some, which is good. So I'm asking for a motion, or asking someone to make the motion to purchase these properties. Okay, have a question?
Are they going to have houses, I mean, they got houses on right now?
They all three have houses that have to be removed.
So we would have to remove the houses?
Yes.
And so we got to, I didn't want to clear on the other one.
What would you appraise, Matty?
A second.
The two on register appraised for like 100, an average of about $170,000, and he agreed. We had the third one appraised, and it came in about the same thing. He agreed to sell us the three houses for a total of $300,000, which will help some for us.
A second motion.
Have a motion and a second. All in favor, yes?
Yes.
Yes.
Any opposition? There is none. Thank you. Construction renovation projects. Mr. Stephen
Good afternoon. If you look at your handout, we'll start with TBA on the project we have with him. Sturton Elementary, you have the mechanical plumbing under slab, rough ends underway. They actually got the footing poured on the levit out there on the classroom additions. So we have met out there once or twice on some construction meetings, so it's going along pretty good. Hopefully, we get a lot more done before this rain sets in this next week.
Steve, what's the timeline on that additional lane we added out there? Timeline to get it done?
I think they were, additional time on the, on the lane, on the bus lane, then were they going to try to mobilize on the lane?
Extra time?
Yeah.
They're going to do it immediately?
Yeah.
First, they want to wait until the summer, the last discussion, we'll go in and talk it.
It's my understanding, get it done as quick as we can.
Yeah. West Washington High School, we met out there yesterday. The project's moving along. The weather's got it held up. They getting a lot of drainage site put in. They getting a lot of drainage site put in, some sewer sites moved, and that's been completed. So moving, moving slow on it also. The security upgrades, most of, all of them are complete. We're waiting on the graphics that's going on the walls at these sites on schools. It's got special graphics. Drew Elementary reroute. Should be getting close to completion on that. Depends on how the weather holds out. Washita Parish Coupe Board, the pavilions. We've got some middles underway. Tentative date for structural, mid, mid-April for the structural steel to start coming in. Starton High School, we held a pre-construction meeting on January the eighth. So that job will be kicking off and be starting all night, that off. Next one will be with Rice Gregory. Start at the middle school. If you look at the bottom where it's highlighted, we met on 1-1, 2024. The first layer of asphalt's been completely done on all the parking and roads out there. Job's still moving forward. Completion date is still set for mid-March, and our next meeting will be January the seventh.
When?
February the seventh. February the seventh. Next one is a land three architect. That'd be the construction on the multipurpose building at the high school. I think they are a hundred percent complete on the brick now. I was out there this morning. They were working on getting the drainage put in at the site for the high school. So hopefully, they'll get that done. They did get the hallway cut in during the Christmas break. And all the structural still been put in on the front that goes into the, the main hallway. And both these jobs, they got a lot of work done over the Christmas break on both Richwood High School and Richwood Middle. I was, the next job be Richwood Middle. All the drainage work being completed. I was out there this morning. They got all the concrete slab poured yesterday. So it's in. So wait for that concrete to cure so we can get started on erecting steel out there. And I got a side note there at the bottom. Rust and glass has started on putting the windows in and swazing. When I, when I did this, it should, we should be in our third week, but this past week, they wasn't able to work much. So they're back working now. So they should be getting completed with that soon. Next one, Lasby Associates be with our treatment plant. And I do have two pictures on the backside of that. Should be completing those the end of January. So and it'll be just a unplug and tie into the new treatment plant. It won't affect schools at all. Robinson Elementary Parking Lot Drainage. They started on field survey. They actually have completed that. And they started on construction plan for that parking lot at Robinson Elementary.
Stephen, wouldn't probably be a bad idea to ask Rice Gregory to start coming to our board meetings since we're kind of coming on a completion date on certain middle, so therefore, he'll be available for any questions or anything. If you don't mind contacting him and asking him to come to our next couple, two or three board meetings till we get it finished.
All right. I'll call him and contact him and get him to.
Appreciate it.
How do we stand at the press box, what's that, Facebook, Washington? Is it a hundred percent yet?
They still working on the punch list. I think, you know, it's been turned over to them. Fire Marshal did approve it. So we're still going through the punch list items.
And they're going to be ready by, by February when they start having games?
Yeah.
I think so.
I think so. That's all I have. Got any questions?
Done a good job. Thank you. Appreciate all the work y'all done the last few days, too.
Appreciate y'all, Stephen.
And I also like to thank Tabby. Tabby put our construction updates on our Facebook page, and she did a great job. And that lets the public know, you know, what's going on in our district and what we're trying to do to improve everything for our students and our staff. Thank y'all.
Thank you.
Hey, Todd, could you give me an update on the status of our classroom cameras installed?
Yeah, I was going to do that during my report.
Okay, good. That'd be fine.
Evaluation bids, Mr. Jones.
Como, Board members. Under evaluation of bids, we had a chiller restoration for Washita Parish High School. Like to remember, like to recommend the only bid we received from Train Corporation for amount of two hundred twenty thousand and eighty-one dollars.
Any questions? All in favor, yes? I need a motion first, I guess. And a second. Now we have all in favor, yes?
Yes.
Any opposition? And of course, there is none. Thank you, Bobby.
Thank you, Mr. Como. Thank you, Board members.
Permission to bid?
Yes, sir.
One or all, however you like to do it.
All, all for one, one for all.
There you go.
First one is thirty-six twenty-four addition renovation of Limmel Elementary. The next one is Chromebooks. And that budget amount probably is, I think that needs to change to two hundred and fifty dollars per each on that item. Thirty-eight twenty-four, some radios and base stations that we're going to get for the schools that will also tie into the sheriff's office, state police.
And the buses.
And the school buses.
Board, this is just an opportunity that Sheriff Russell and his team brought to us. Several months ago, we've been trying to figure out how to do it. But this would be radios that would tie into the land-wind system. Our, our hope is to put these on all of our school buses in several units within the schools. They would give us statewide coverage for our buses and, you know, automatic access to law enforcement. If, heaven forbid, if we ever needed them, they could communicate openly with anyone. So Sheriff Russell and his team certainly recommend this, and that is our hope with that bid.
How many, how many radios are we talking about?
We're talking about, uh, these are land-wind radios. So these are the same exact radios that all law enforcement in Louisiana carry. We're talking about, about two hundred and fifty approximately for every bus in the fleet. And then each school, correct me if I'm wrong, one or two start. We have West Monroe High School and Washita High School have already used some of their own funds to purchase these. They're already on the land-wind system. But for example, a, a principle, if, if we're traveling and we've got, Wayland's got buses on the road, and we need to communicate with all those buses at one time in Baton Rouge, New Orleans, or Tibida, we can do it from here. So.
The average cost of a radio?
Radios are quite expensive, so.
The budget is a million dollars.
So.
I see what the budget is.
It's for everything.
I was asking what's the average cost of a radio?
Clint, I don't have that right. A piece, yeah.
They'll be in all schools, Todd?
In all schools and all buses.
All buses.
Right.
Next item, thirty-nine twenty, I'm sorry.
At the, at your Hiller's convenience, could you, for me, for my sake, be more definitive in terms of the number of radios times to cost, so that I can?
Yes, sir. We'll get that to you, Mr. Boy. The next item is thirty-nine twenty-four playground equipment, which is being, which we, for all the elementary schools, being paid for out of special ed funds. And then the last item is forty twenty-four copy paper, which we bid that every year.
Is this all the elementary schools for playground equipment?
Yes, sir. That's being paid for out of special ed funds. It's some, they're all getting the same thing.
It will service all the kids at the school, though, right?
Yes, sir. As far as I know, I don't think.
Dr. Archer, you want to add to that, any?
Actually, the equipment is for sensory needs. And if you're going to be pretty comprehensive, you know, that we have a lot of disabilities that have sensory needs.
I can't hear.
The four speakers cannot, the ground equipment has obviously been special ed funds. But the, the way that we are using, using sensory equipment to address the needs of our students and disabilities at all of the elementary schools. So that maybe some of them have their issues that you might have to find through, maybe. So we're trying to, yes, of the network, to get people to provide an opportunity for our students to have adaptive equipment, own the playground to be used when there is not anything else. Because you go to the elementary school agency, that most of our playground equipment is for regular kids. It's been bought from the whole school side. But when you look at adaptive equipment, it is slide swings that will hold wheelchair that students can replace in the wheelchair, hold the slide swing, and then they will be able to swing. Whereas, when they were not able, they would be no good side question. So we have carried out the money, and this is why our teachers and other kids ask me about this. And I'm worried about you, and I'm hoping that we can provide.
Thank you, Dr. Archer. Just so, maybe you couldn't hear, but it is for students with sensory needs that are in our, served by our student support services as requested by occupational therapists and physical therapists.
Okay, so it's not just the, the normal playground equipment?
That's right.
Thank you.
Any other questions, comments? Have a motion to, we've got copy paper to do, right?
Yes, copy paper as well.
Okay. Oh, a motion to allow Bobby to bid these five items as he's presenting. A motion and a second. All in favor, yes?
Yes.
Any opposition? And again, there's none. Thank you, Bobby.
Thank you, Mr. Como. Thank you, Board members.
Yes, sir.
All right. We've had a busy week, especially in the maintenance department and a lot of other folks involved. I'd like to offer a special thanks to Todd Lennon, Stephen Hippel, Sam Jones, for all the leadership in putting out the leaks, not the fires, but the leaks that we've had over the last few days. A special thanks to Mr. Gass and Tabby for keeping us all informed. They did a good job. Received very few calls, which is always great when you don't have to answer any of these questions that you can't answer anyway. But anyway, thank you, Todd and all of you crew.
Thank you, Ms. Corwin. Just to kind of piggyback off of Mr. Como's comments, I know Todd is back here in the back. Sam was here earlier. Sam is still hopping all around the parish. And Stephen, while the rest of us or many of us were at home this week, they were not. And along with our building supervisors, we certainly can't leave them out, and our principals. It's a busy week. We've got more cold temperatures this weekend than expecting a lot of rain next week. So Louisiana weather never disappoints. So Tabby did do a great job. Our goal was to keep everybody informed. I hope we did that. We tried to be as transparent as we could as far as what we were doing and why we were doing it. So hopefully, everybody appreciated it. I told some of the directors yesterday, I went from a hero Wednesday to a zero yesterday for getting us back in school today. But we just felt like after our weather team that Orlando heads up and, and he had organized, we covered a lot of miles in this parish this week, looking at roads to make sure that we weren't going to put anyone on the road. Our buses, our young student drivers, our employees, unless we felt like it was absolutely safe, and we felt like we could do that today. I know Waylon was out driving this morning, but he said that our, no reports of any road issues this morning. All of our buses arrived safely, and we appreciate their work. Mr. Manley, to get to your, and I, I want to thank the board, too. I mean, several of you were calling me with road updates in your areas, and that, that certainly helped as we made those decisions. We were out at West Washita yesterday. Stephen mentioned Video Link was out yesterday. Daryl Garnett, who got that project, he was out installing cameras. We have now pulled wire in eight schools completely. That is the time-consuming thing of this project, and they were installing. And he said almost complete, had installed the classroom cameras at West Washita. I do not think they are fired up and live yet, but that should be coming very quickly. Orlando, Clint, anything y'all want to add to that? They're the ones that are getting the updates on this, more so than me. That's pretty much where we are. So eight, eight schools have been completely finished with the wiring, and now we are starting to install the actual cameras, so.
Todd, what's the timeline on finishing the project?
It's going right up to our deadline. So we hope to have it by mid to late summer. But it's, these are, these are Essor-funded projects that have to be done by September. So it's, it's going right up to the project. But I have been pleased so far, Clint, Orlando, correct me if I'm wrong, with Video Link and his teams, they are, they are working nights. So what they're doing is coming in, in most cases, around three o'clock, late afternoon. They're working after all the teachers and kids leave, and they're working weekends. So trying to not disrupt any more than we have to.
Is this tied into bus cameras, too, or is that a separate deal?
It's a separate deal. Funded by the same source, but separate, separate project.
What's the timeline on bus cameras?
Uh, Orlando, I mean, Waylon, the bus cameras are one oh percent done. We have started, it's kind of funny, we started installing air conditioners in the last week, so, in our buses, so.
Hallelujah. So how would the land, the land radios tie in with the cameras? Will they?
They will not tie into the cameras. They will not, they tie into the emergency network all over the state.
So all the bus cameras have been installed?
All of our bus cameras are up and operational, and I have heard nothing but rave reviews from our principals and everyone that's dealing with those. So Waylon, anything you want to add? All right.
One last question on air conditioning, because that was a hot topic last year, around September, when it was hot. What's the timeline, Waylon, on all the buses being air-conditioned that are supposed to be air-conditioned?
The target date is the end of April, but we are hoping it's before the summer gets here, which will be close to the end.
So by May, all the buses will be air-conditioned?
All right, just FYI, our budget and planning task force meeting has been moved to next Tuesday. It was supposed to be this week during the weather delay as well. So just want to give you that update. Mr. Thompson heads that committee, and, and they have moved that meeting to Tuesday. That's all I've got. Thank you.
All right, Board, our next meeting's on the thirteenth of February. Have a motion to adjourn?
I'll make a motion.
And a second. Thank you all. Have a good day.